Great since I saw you last night. A little bit, I'm telling you, a little bit.
All right, well, welcome everybody and welcome to the Tuesday, January 17th, 2017, City Council Work Session. At this time, I will call the meeting into order, and we're going to light this right up with Todd Kayes from the First District. Welcome, Todd.
Welcome, Todd.
Well, thank you. I had to make sure I had my light on. Thank you for the opportunity to come before the City Council and the public to give a little brief overview of work activities here at the First Planning District. Most of you on the City Council know who we are and what we do for you, but for the public's interest, I've got just a quick overview of who we are and work activities that we have worked on for the city of Watertown over the course of the last year. As many of you are aware, we're one of six regional planning and development districts across the state. We have sister organizations in Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Pierre, Yankton, and Aberdeen. We're not government, but we were created through executive order by Governor Frank Farrar in 1971, and our mission today is very much the same as it was back in 1971. We're here to provide technical assistance to our members in areas that enhance the quality of life for the residents of the area doing community and economic development projects. We work in 11 counties and 76 communities, from Roberts County to Moody, over to Minor, and back up to Clark. We are governed by a governing body of 35 members. There are three members from each county, plus the Chairman of the Flandre Santi Sioux and the Assistant Wapten Oyate. In Cottington County, Brenda Hampton is the County Representative. Craig Atkins is our at-large member, and currently, we have a vacant spot on our municipal representative. What we will be doing this spring is we will be taking nominations from each municipality. If only one municipality brings forth a member, that person ends up being the municipal rep. If we have more than one community wanting to put somebody on the board, we then have a runoff election. As far as how we are funded, we have three general streams of revenue that come into our office. Twenty-three percent of the revenues come in the form of dues. Every community with a population over 100 in all counties pay dues into our organization. We use those dues to leverage some federal and state grants, plus we also do some state and federal contract work, which represents about 28% of our operating revenue. And then the other work that we do is fee-for-service work. About 49% of our operating revenues come in that form. And we're able to provide fee-for-service work to our members at rates below the market level, just due to the power of the collective. We may be using money from Brookings County on a particular year to do a project in Cottington County or the city of Watertown, or vice versa.
We like the other few counties, there's more than ours, okay?
That's what they said just the other day.
Yeah, I bet.
As far as staff, we have a very seasoned staff. We have 12 full-time employees and two part-time employees and interns in our office right now. I've been with the district since 1993. Just quickly, there's two handouts. One is the PowerPoint presentation. The other one is just a list of different projects that were completed within the county and the municipalities. I'm going to focus on those projects that we worked on in Watertown over the course of the last year. As you know, we are very well-known for our packaging of grant applications and loan applications for community and economic development projects. Last year, we were able to assist the city of Watertown in getting an HMGP grant. Greg Mogg in our office worked with the fire department, and the city received almost $250,000 for that new safe room that's going to be built out by the soccer complex. We were also just recently here, a few weeks ago, were notified that the Boys and Girls Club will be receiving $412,000. The city was the sponsor on that grant for that improvement project that will be moving forward this year. Now, generally, in addition to writing the grants, if the people are funded through those grants, we assist in the project administration, making sure all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, all the red tape. There's no such thing as free dollars or free money out there, so we do help out with that. As far as planning and research, we do a lot of base research. If there's a question that needs to be looked into, sample policies that have been developed elsewhere, we will do that research and bring it back to our members. We attend planning and zoning boards of adjustment meetings every month. Luke Muller is our representative that comes to the city. Luke attends weekly planning department staff meetings. We also act as that conduit between the city and the county on a variety of land use and development issues. And even earlier this year, when we had a vacancy in the urban planner, Luke Muller in our office came over and helped out on a part-time basis for the city until Ms. Hampton was employed. We are also finishing up the Conference of Land Use Plan. That's been a couple of your project. My understanding is the spring that will be coming before you. Also, Luke has been working with a group of City Council members over the course of the last year on updating and reviewing the sign code ordinance. And then, most recently, Ted Hader in our office worked with the city in conducting the environmental review for the shooting range project that's going on the south part of town. We also have a lot of different technical and financial specialties and services that we provide. We work in the areas of tax increment financing, revolving loan funds, and GIS, geographic information systems. GIS is an integral part of what we do at our office. It's done in everything from policy development to grant applications. We manage a couple statewide GIS databases that the city has access to. We also work with the city police department and managing the database for your 911 calls, assisting in addressing, signing addresses. We also host the city's website GIS information and manage all the GIS database sets for the planning and zoning department, so when you have meetings or when staff is looking for specific information, that information is current and up-to-date. We also helped with the staff put together some information from a GIS perspective to assist with the Watertown Payment Management System this last year. As far as RLFS, revolving loan funds, we have a sister organization, the First District Development Company. They are a group of four individuals in the office that work in business loans to existing and new businesses throughout the Planning District. We have a portfolio of different loans. We're also a Small Business Administration certified development company, so we work with those new businesses and expanding businesses. And last year, we did do two loans here in Watertown where we were able to help out obtaining $510,000 on $1.1 million worth of economic development spend within the city. We usually take a shared first or a subordinated position on those loans with other local lending institutions. And then, we're always out there promoting and supporting various state and federal programs that have an impact or benefit on our members. As far as how do we measure success and return on investment, I think all those things that we talked about, you can see some direct and indirect benefits, but we usually come back to how we've been successful, how successful have we been in helping our members obtain outside funding for various projects? And last year, we were able to assist our membership with about $20.5 million in loan and grant dollars to do projects throughout the district, about $4.5 million just in grant dollars alone. So if you take the amount of dues divided into the grants that came into the district, about $17.80 return on investment. If we look at since 2008, and that's when I became the Director, we've been able to help our members obtain about $54 million in grants into the area. We don't have the money. It's not underneath our mattress or in a closet, but we do know where the pots of money are, and we are that conduit between our membership and those state and federal funding sources. In Cottington County, just briefly, about $9.8, $10 million of grants over the last eight years, $26 a year return on investment. Last year, we did about $23 for every dollar's worth of dues, primarily because of the city of Watertown projects and also some grant dollars we did for the county and the town of South Shore. Watertown specifically, last year, about $660,000 in grant dollars coming into the city for a variety of projects. The grants from between 2008 and 2016 have been pushing $2.8 million. Last year, our return on investment for the city dues was about $72 for every dollar's worth of dues. So we looked at over the last, since 2008, $38 coming back to you. So we think we do provide some benefit to the city of Watertown. We've appreciated the working relationship that we've had since 1971, me specifically, for 24 years that I've been working in the organization. You have a very competent staff, good quality leadership, and I don't need to go any more sunshine up your skirts, but we do appreciate working with you and look forward to this continued relationship going forward. And I'd be more than glad to address any questions or talk about any of the projects or dollars I just threw out.
Todd, I've got a question. Your organization, from my experience, has seemed to be very active over the years, and I think your numbers bear that out. Do you have any sense how you compare to the other districts in the state as far as activity?
It's very comparable. I mean, some districts, based on the population makeup, the number of small towns that they have, they qualify for different programs that maybe some of us don't have. Southeastern Council of Governments in Sioux Falls is a little bit different animal, because Sioux Falls doesn't qualify certain community development block grants to get itself allotment. And so, it's a little bit different. Like, this last time around on community development block grants, there were six funded across the state, and we received two in Watertown. You know, so, and then, we might not see one now for six months.
I've met most of those other Directors, and you're substantially better than they are.
Thank you very much.
One of the things, I did have a question for you. In the legislature, they're talking about TIFs this year, and I'm sure you're up on that. What's your feelings towards that? What's going on right now?
That's kind of a loaded question. I mean, I think from a municipality standpoint, I can understand that there is some reason to be a little bit leery of what the potential proposed TIF language is going to do. It would restrict the number of TIFs that you would be able to do without certain standards, is my understanding. I understand the reason that they're looking at is why should ZBAC County be paying for some of the tax benefits that the city of Watertown is getting because of real estate. However, there's also been some communities and some counties who have kind of probably overutilized the TIF in ways that have been maybe not so much in line with what the intent of that TIF language is. My feeling is, is that we should hopefully be able to, if we can't use TIFs for economic development, we need to find another tool, because we have so few tools in the toolbox for economic development, either TIFs or discretionary tax formula, or participating, you know, municipal entities and having to cut breaks on utility costs or whatever to make things happen. So, we don't have a lot of tools in our tool bag, and so I'm hoping that there is some sort of a compromise that comes out of it. I know the bill is sponsored by the governor, and it's...
It is, but it seems to me like there's the one county, the one instance, that just kind of took it to everybody. Took it right in the shorts for all of us, and it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right.
And I think that message needs to be probably relayed to the representatives of this area and have them carry that forward for the city.
Any questions for Todd, anybody?
Just a quick thing. If any of you are interested on sitting on the board, on my governing body, think about that. We'll be sending out a letter, I think, here in February, asking for communities to put out a nomination. And if you're the only one that nominates, and guess what, you're probably on the board. If somebody from Henry wants to be on it, then we'll have an election between the two of you, so. Well, thank you again. As always, enjoy.
Thanks, Todd. And again, tell Ted thanks for all the help that he's been doing, and I know that Shelley will be looking forward to working with him for the entire of next, this year of 2017, I believe.
Yes. And if there's anything that you need Luke to do, just let him know.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, annual bridge inspection summary by Mark Junkers of Austin Engineering. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you.
Enough snow out there for you?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
A little more where I live, actually.
Okay. Well, we'll let you light this up.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll be going over the bridge inspections that were done in 2016. My name's Mark Junker. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Austin Engineering. I've been inspecting the city of Watertown bridges since 2003. Also do inspections for Cottington County and surrounding counties. A little background on the bridge inspection program. Bridge inspections are a federal requirement. Any bridge longer than 20 feet must be inspected, and bridges must be inspected a minimum of once every two years. The exception to that are box culverts, which are a type of bridge. They can be inspected once every four years if they're in good condition. And the city of Watertown does have four box culverts, and three of those are on the four-year inspection cycle. The number of bridges in Watertown, in 2008, there were seven bridges on the inspection inventory. That increased to 12 bridges as of 2015. One structure was removed from the inspection list last year, so we're down to 11 bridges right now. With the vacation of South Broadway, there was a bridge on the very southern end of that route that has been removed from the city of Watertown's list. So the blue circles here are the structures that have historically been inspected. 10th Avenue North, 3rd Avenue North, the Camp Bridge, 4th Avenue South, South Broadway Bridge by Little River City. And then, this should be a blue circle right here on 20th Avenue South across the Big Sioux River. So, the structure that was vacated was right here on the southern end of South Broadway. Structures that have been added in recent years would be the Willow Creek Drive Bridge, the 20th Avenue South Bridge crossing Willow Creek. And then, there's two box culverts on inlet and outlets of Lake Pelican on the 20th Avenue South bypass. And then, the other structure that was added in recent years is there's a box culvert on the north end of Lake Compesca. The city of Watertown inherited this bridge when South Dakota 139 was transferred over to the city. So, there were four bridges inspected in 2016. The 10th Avenue North Box Culvert, the South Broadway Bridge, 20th Avenue South Bridge over Willow Creek, and the Willow Creek Drive Bridge. 10th Avenue North Box Culvert. This box was built in 1990. It's in good condition. This box culvert is on a four-year inspection cycle. There's no major defects to the box culvert currently. One recommendation we did make to the city was on the wing walls at all four corners to install riprap. This will help protect the box and the roadway during a major flood event. The next structure that was inspected in 2016 is South Broadway Bridge by Little River City. The structure was originally built in 1962. In 2016, basically, the top portion of the bridge was replaced, which consists of the beams and deck units. All the replaced items are, of course, in good condition. The original foundation, which was left in place, is in satisfactory condition. There are no major defects to this bridge currently, and there were no repairs recommended at this time. Next structure was a 20th Avenue South Bridge over Willow Creek. This structure was built in 2010. It's in good condition, no major defects. We made a recommendation to mill and overlay the asphalt roadway approaches. That was done in the summer of 2016. There's some minor erosion occurring at the wing wall ends, too, which was a recommendation we had for an item to be fixed. Next on the list was Willow Creek Drive Bridge. This bridge was built in 2008. The structure is in good condition. There are no major defects. Do make a recommendation to the city to install an epoxy chip sealant on the concrete deck to keep the concrete deck in good condition and to extend the service life of the bridge. Also make a recommendation to mill and overlay the asphalt roadway approaches. There's a slight bump at each end of the bridge. And then, there's a joint that should be resealed between the asphalt approaches and the bridge.
So, Mark, when you put that recommendation out there for that epoxy, do you know what the costs are of those, what you're seeing as far as the cost? I have an idea. I'm just wondering what you're seeing.
It depends, of course, on the size of the bridge and the deck, but, you know, on larger bridges, you could be looking at $100,000 for something like that.
And what kind of a life expectancy does that give that bridge?
That's a good...
In addition?
That's a good question. I don't know exactly how much longer it extends the life. I know the South Dakota DOT is a big proponent of doing this, and they regularly maintain their state bridges, their concrete decks, by applying epoxy chip sealant to the deck.
So, I would think if there's a way that we could pony, or piggyback on with, when the state is doing their bridges, it would probably be a better cost for us?
Correct, correct. And there's actually four bridges in Watertown that could use this type of work, so doing them all together would also be a cost savings.
Okay, thank you.
I did include all the pictures that were included in the inspection for the council review, so you can kind of see what Mark saw when he was out there doing the inspection. So, if you had any questions with those photos, I do have them up on my screen if anybody had a question, so.
And lastly here, this is a chart gave to Shane at the city. Basically, shows all the structures the city owns and the estimated remaining lifespan of each structure. The chart is meant to be used as, just so you can kind of see what's coming down the road for replacement and repairs. It doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, 50 years, this bridge is going to fall down. It's meant to be used as a guide to see when you're going to have projects coming up. So, in general, the city is sitting pretty good as far as the condition of your structures. Probably the big exception would be the 3rd Avenue North Bridge. That structure is in need of replacement. It's at the end of its lifespan. It currently does have a load limit on it. I know Shane has applied for a grant to get the process rolling on replacing that structure. Your other structures, you're looking at, you know, quite a few years down the road before you're looking at possible replacement or doing something with them, so. And like I mentioned before, on the concrete decks, the bridges in Watertown that have those, putting an epoxy chip sealant on the deck would preserve the city's investment in those bridges, so. That's all I had, if anybody has any questions.
Mark, the 3rd Avenue North Bridge, is that showing up there that it's, within 10 years, it should be done?
Yes.
Okay. Is it, it looks like it's in worse shape than that, but is that a reasonable time based on its condition? Would it last 10 years as we're going, and without putting further load limits or something on that to...
The load limits could possibly be decreased over that time, you know. Currently loaded trucks can't cross it, so, yeah. It's time for it to go and get a new structure in there.
Question on that same bridge. Shane, we talked about this a couple of meetings, though. Is this one of those grand applications where, depending upon how much we put in as a match, will help determine how much we get? Is that...
Well, it increases the number, the more the community's willing to pay for our cost share, increases the point value, so it might raise you up towards the funding faster.
But this is a grant application where that is an example of that criteria?
Right. We have a grant, or application in for preliminary engineering on this structure with the anticipation that, once we get that, then we'll apply for construction funding following the preliminary engineering. So, it is in the works. We hope to have it replaced within five years or sooner.
So, basically, you're, it's like you're buying points, is what it is, so.
Right. You're competing against other communities, and so those people that are willing to pay a larger local share buy points to get raised up in the funding.
Mark, do you get a schedule of what you're going to inspect next year? Which bridges are up next, or? I guess the reason I ask that is the one on Highway 212. You know, we know that that's going to be replaced within a couple of years?
Something I didn't mention in the previous map here. The structures on 212 and 81, those are owned, operated, and inspected by the South Dakota DOT.
Okay, that answers my question, then, because I was leading to the fact that if we know it's going to be replaced in a couple of years, are we going to spend city dollars to inspect it? But that answered my question. Thank you.
Yep.
What is the current load limit on 3rd Avenue?
It's 18 tons for a single-unit truck and 30 tons for like a semi, which is basically a half-load.
All right.
The only other bridge that I can recall that we had a load limit on was the one on South Broadway that's now been replaced and servicing the business to the south side of the river.
Well, thanks, Mark. Are there any other questions for Mark?
Yeah, I do have one, Mark. You had mentioned that we have four box culvert-type bridges, and three are on the four-year plan.
Yep.
Which one is not on the four-year plan?
That one up on the north end of Compesca. It looks, it's starting to deteriorate in areas, so it's on a two-year inspection cycle.
The Compesca Lodge area?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mark. I appreciate you coming in and...
All right.
Updating us on this.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your business.
All right, thanks. Enjoy the snow. Mark said Austin Engineering. Yep, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, number four, audit engagement letter for the 2016 financial statement. Shelley, I think that's you.
It is. Just briefly, you have two letters in the agenda packet. One is from William Neal stating that they've been engaged to do the 2016 financial statement audit. This is the third year of their three-year contract that was approved by the City Council. We also, the second letter is from the South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. They have to review and authorize the auditor to perform, which they have, and that letter states that they've authorized William Neal. Not just anybody can perform the audit, they have to meet certain standards, which, of course, William Neal does. There's no action that's needed. It's just required to be distributed to the audit committee, and since we don't have any formal audit committee, you as a governing body are defaulted to that title. And so, that's me just doing my due diligence and letting you know that William Neal will be doing the 2016 financial audit.
Perfect, and they've done an outstanding job for us numerous years, so we should be okay on that.
I guess I would have one question. Look, we've had this conversation before. The one issue that I know I've heard expressed a couple of different times is the timeliness of the audit. Any comments about this past, about 2015? Uh, wh- any comments about this past, about 2015, uh, did that get done uh, a little more timely than in years past?
Um, it, it took about the same amount of time. In, in the last year, it was a little more unique, we had um, a new Gatsby regulation that came out. Um, that was pretty complicated and it involved just way too many spreadsheets and numbers and formulas and. Um, and then we had a whole new section of notes, so that took just a little bit longer to figure out what should be where. Um, and then um, we, we, I thought we did a lot better job of doing review, making sure things tied out. Um, looking at the comments from previous years, making sure that we corrected any issues that we had. Um, we did get um, notification back that we were proficient, we did um, get the award. But um, that's part of that due diligence and that took, I don't, probably a couple extra weeks. Um, and I think because we had that time, we weren't down to the, to the wire. We continue, um, Troy's been in a couple of times, we continue to try to get that timeline a little more um, minimized so that we're not running into budget and um, CAFRA at the same time, so we'll, we'll just continue to work on that and hopefully. Keep, keep going in the right direction anyway.
Anybody have any other questions for Shelley on that? Justin, you wanna touch base on a couple of items, I don't know that we had talked about and uh, we'll just kinda run by them here quick.
Thank you Mayor, uh, just a few items here of note. Uh, I wanted to point out that the moratorium that this council had established with Resolution 1601. A moratorium on applications for new off-premise signs within the city of Watertown. That that has now expired and had expired on January 4th of 2017, so just as a kind of FYI. Um, at this point, we've had one application and permit approved and we have had. Two inquiries about off-premise signs within the community since January 4th. If you have any further questions about the status of our off-premise signs or sign code ordinance, uh, you know, feel free to let me know. But the effect of this then is that the moratorium has ended and so the current. Ordinance relating to off-premise signs applies.
Can you refresh?
What, um, what Justin's getting at here, I'm just gonna throw this at you guys. Is that uh, the moratorium is off, there are being people that are, are requesting signs. I think the question begs us, uh, do we? Put it back on for a while until we get the sign ordinance done? Or are we, are we good to go and let them put up the, the signs that they want? That's the question I believe.
Well Mayor, I think, I'm not exactly sure where we're at with the sign ordinance in far as getting everything done there, but. It has been worked on for quite some time, uh, it feels like we're relatively close. And since we are that close, my recommendation would be to extend the, the um, moratorium uh, so that we can get what we need to get done and get it in place and, and go there, that would be my recommendation.
You know, currently I believe, like, as, as you said Justin, there's three of them out there, one was actually approved because there's nothing to stop us on that. The others, there are issues, you know, whether it's uh, parking, if we're taking away parking spaces, uh, things such as that, so they are gonna be put on hold for a short time, but. It might behoove us to do something to that order and, and add a couple of two, three months onto this, so. If you guys um, think that's something we should do, we can certainly bring that and put that on the council agenda.
And there's, I know when we first put this moratorium on, there was discussion about some kind of a timeframe for it, which we'd put the deadline on, so. There's not a problem with us extending it knowing that we're close to revised uh, ordinances, is there?
At, at this point, you, just like with any kind of permit system, councilman, uh, you know, it's not something that is an entitlement per se, so. You know, if this council has a reasonable basis for extending a moratorium, which legally speaking, um, you know, having ordinance in the works. To really perfect things the way you would like to see them perfected, that would strike me as being reasonable basis.
So will we have to run that through as a resolution? Can you take care of that and get that started for us and right away?
Will do Mayor.
Yeah, alright, and then I would visit with Kenny and kinda see where, where we're at in that sign ordinance, I really truly believe Mike, we're close.
It seems like, I didn't, would, would that be addressed in our council meeting tonight, Mayor, or would that?
I don't believe so.
No, i- in order to take uh, public action on, on business, official business, we would need to have provided the 24-hour public notice and, so we'll have to wait until next city council meeting.
I think we should be okay, because if I'm not mistaken, everything that is being looked at right now has to go in front of the planning commissioner, the, you know, so we should be alright.
There was another item here Mayor, um, that was brought up uh, to our attention today and I don't know if it can fit here enough. Is, is it possible to pull back a little bit? So, this isn't the best representation, but um, if you know anything about uh, city buildings here-
Just to touch more, bring it back just a little bit.
You might be able to pick out that, that rough sketch is a depiction of the uh, current uh, Watertown recreational center. And this was brought to our attention by the school district. And with an idea that the recreational center will in the future, once the city has no public purpose for it. There's the possibility that it could be, depending upon uh, the city council's desires, uh, transferred to the school district. And uh, this possibility is depicted here visually, not in the best way, but this is what their architects were able to send by us. Effectively what the cities are, what, what the school district is wanting to have dedicated to their use. Is this portion that stretches from here all the way down to this point here. I don't know if you can see my finger right here, and then straight down across to here. And what essentially that would take, uh, you know, I, I think I've talked in the past about. The sale of real property by the municipality to private entities and how there are a number of restrictions in statute on how that can occur. Statute, s- state ca- uh, uh, state law on the matter regarding transfers between municipalities and school districts, much more liberal. Um, and a resolution would ultimately be necessary for such a transfer. Uh, but anyways, just tossing this out here, uh, and I think the mayor uh, might reference in particular what the school district. Is maybe looking for in the near term before uh, the details of that transfer actually worked out. Uh, some, uh, the, the, the idea of a letter of assurance had been broached. And uh, the form that would take is essentially a promise uh, by the city to at some point. Uh, deed over, transfer over a portion of the recreational center to the school district.
Does this correlate the original plans of the, the original, where the-
It, it is very, very close, on the, on the north side of it, where you see the darker black line up there. They actually moved that because what that is, is that's a two-hour uh, wall for fire protection. The actual Boys and Girls Club wanted to bring that wall back this way, about six, eight feet, so that they had some of the concrete. They came to the, to the agreement that there's no sense in spending money for another wall, so really the, the school picked up a few foot, uh, maybe six-
Correlation between the two, two entities, so.
And what's nice about it here, you know, they're going to fill in the pool, they're gonna do some jackhammering around there. They wanna spend money and they want to just be assured that we're okay with them doing that, uh, that building in there. What they're, what they're showing right here is wrestling matches, but what they're also going to put in is a special flooring for tennis courts also, which will. Really be an added benefit for Watertown. They're gonna move their, their uh, director into that area for the, uh, what is he called, the sports director?
Athletic Director.
Athletic Director, he's gonna be put into that area, they're gonna continue uh, down on the south side there where, where the weightlifting is now. You know, leave that as it is and, and turn that into a different usage for it. So it's looking very good and they've got big plants, on the east side, they're gonna remove a lot of the wall and put glass in there so you can have better. Uh, you know, light coming into that building, so they're just asking us if it's okay and they need a lot of assurance for that, uh, for that property.
Mayor, how would the handling of utilities occur if we deed over this property, cause I, I think there's two different systems in there based on the phases that took place. How would that work?
Right.
In this scenario?
Uh, we had that discussion just the other day, they actually feel as though there's just a very, very small part on the southwest corner. That is still included in the Boys and Girls Club and I think they worked out that between them, so both systems have their own uh, heating and utilities uh, that they'll be paying. Really, I think it's come together very smooth. Hey, the, you guys got questions on it? I know the school at their, uh, at their meeting, board meeting the other night, were showing different photographs and what it could look like inside and. It's pretty impressive, it's gonna be a very nice facility. I asked them if they were gonna get rid of that roof and put the glass back in and, yeah, they said no. Anything else, Justin?
Uh, one of- Getting mosey-
One of the things I wanted to bring up too is um, Justin, Shelley and I and, and Shane were discussing this morning about how you're seeing. Things come on the council meetings, you know, if there's a change, a, a bigger change, then we have to go through the whole first reading again and second reading again. One of the comments that um, that we came to an agreement with that we think would work well. Is that when we have a first reading of an ordinance, instead of having the first reading, let's put that ordinance on the work session so we can discuss it. Talk about it a week in advance or two weeks in advance before we know that it'll go on to this first reading. So that if there's major changes the council wants to make on that, we can then have that ready for first reading. Does that make sense to you guys? I think it's uh, something that would work and it would save us a couple of weeks. Yep. Yep, yep, we'll have plenty of time, there'll be some things that the planning, zoning and, and those people will have that they'll bring forward. That won't get on the work session, but it'll be a first reading and they had already hashed it over.
So Mayor, the final item I'd bring up here at the work session is with regard to the revised ordinances, our local code. And I've been talking to the council for a while now about updating and what form that would take. Well, with the help of the IT department, we do have a, an updated city ordinance webpage here. Which is much more simplified than the previous. It has one link here to the newly updated revised ordinances and then the old link to the Home Rule Charter. Now obviously, Home Rule Charter doesn't need to be changed uh, very often, but if you click on it. You get uh, this document here, which unlike the prior iteration of the revised ordinances, it is one complete document, it isn't split up by chapters. What that allows you to do is Ctrl F, search the entire code, uh, quickly and easily for particular words. We also have it broken down where uh, if you use Adobe Reader, obviously you'll need it in order to access PDF, but. You can utilize the bookmarks and we have a little instruction here on the front showing you how to do that. You can utilize bookmarks that have been built that give you a, uh, an ability to go to each chapter of each title. Uh, within the revised code, or revised ordinances. We also have hyperlinks built in here, so it can take you to everything pretty quickly. So on the table of contents, you have each title, you have the chapters underneath it. And so if you want to go to a title not knowing exactly where you wanna land, it'll take you to the title, the chapters there. Bring you down to the particular chapter, you can then choose to, if that wasn't the right chapter, go back to, to the title contents. Or you can go to another chapter and then click on to the individual sections and it'll take you right there. If you wanna go back to the chapter heading, you just simply click back to chapter contents, so. We have hyperlinks throughout the document meant to offer ease of navigation between the sections, chapters and titles. We also have, and this is I, uh, you know, a point that Councilman Danforth has brought up. With regard to ordinances referencing other ordinances, referencing other sections that may be way on the other end of the revised ordinances. Those sections are hyperlinked as well now, and I'm trying to find examples, there are plenty of them in Title 21 here. So we'll go to, so for instance, this section here, 211401 makes reference to Section 210102 objectives. You click on that, it takes you to objectives. Now if you wanna go back from where you just clicked a hyperlink to, you just simply hold Alt and then the left arrow. And it'll take you back to wherever you were, so if you wanna jump ahead to see what do they mean by that particular section? You can click on it and then simply hit Alt and the left arrow to go back, you can also hit Alt and the uh, right arrow. To go forward again, back to where you were, so. It, it's meant to be a more intuitive way of getting at the information in our code so that it's no longer a mystery. Most importantly, I would argue, we're going to make a good effort uh, in my office. To ensure that this gets updated on a regular basis. So that we aren't left with two-year, three-year stretches where this doesn't get updated. Uh, and so I hope this becomes a user-friendly tool, not only for the council, but also for the public at large, because. Obviously these laws impact them, uh, and you know, I consider it to be one of the most important aspects of my job, making sure that that's. Uh, apparent to our citizens, so. If you have any questions, want further tutorials, I'm happy to provide them, um, you know, but otherwise. Hopefully, you can make good use of this.
Well done for all involved, that's, I used it today and it was really fun, it worked just like you said. Instead of scrolling up and scrolling down and scrolling back and forth.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Justin on that, I think that's uh, very impressive, absolutely, that would be very good for us.
I'd like to thank him for all of his hard work he's put in, uh, working and bringing some of our ordinances up to date and making this a little bit easier for all of us to use, so.
Absolutely, anything else? Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting, we'll be back at seven o'clock for the city council meeting, thank you.